Called to order the regular meeting of the Dickinson City Commission for Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Let the record show this evening that we are missing one Commissioner, Commissioner Soboluk. We have one Commissioner joining us by telephone and Commissioner Oderman will be joining us a little late this evening. He is in a business meeting right now, so we'll proceed with the three of us. The opening ceremonies this evening, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, come to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item this evening is the Order of Business. Mr. Dossinger, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the Commission. There is no change to the Order of Business.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any discussion on the Order of Business? Now I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear. And I'll second.
Second.
Okay. Second by Commissioner Frederick. All in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Is there anything on the Consent Agenda, Commissioners, you wish to discuss? There is nothing on the Consent Agenda you wish to discuss? I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We will move into our Administration and Finance for this evening. First item up is proclamation. This proclamation is for Giving Hearts Day, which we will be celebrating here on February ninth. So I will read this proclamation. Giving Hearts Day Proclamation for Dickinson, North Dakota, in observance of Giving Hearts Day on February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. Whereas, the goals of Giving Hearts Day are to raise awareness for the charitable nonprofit sector and its organizations in North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota, to promote online giving, volunteerism, and the donation of goods, and to provide donors with the opportunity to multiply the results of their giving. And whereas, Giving Hearts Day is a powerful example of a private sector providing assistance to charitable nonprofit organizations that offer vital services to improve the quality of life for many members of our community. And whereas, the charitable nonprofit sector support individuals and families with quality programs, materials, and funds that promote, encourage, and sustain independence and self-sufficiency. And whereas, in order to provide these benefits, charities need ongoing funds, volunteers, and goods to continue providing long-term, sustainable services to our residents in need. And whereas, these charities have demonstrated a need for collaboration and resources, and have joined together for this twenty-four-hour fundraiser event that is dedicated to inspiring online donations for charities at GivingHeartsDay.org. Now, therefore do I, Scott Decker, President of the City Commission of the City of Dickinson, hereby proclaim February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Giving Hearts Day in Dickinson, North Dakota, and call upon public officials, businesses, and community leaders, and all Dickinson residents to observe this day with appropriate activities and programs, recognize charitable nonprofits, their staffs, and volunteers who provide essential services to our community, and support Giving Hearts Day by volunteering or providing financial support to these local charities in Dickinson, North Dakota, and across North Dakota and Northwest Minnesota at GivingHeartsDay.org. In witness whereof, I here unto set my hand and cause this seal to be fixed. And I would look for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. All in favor, state aye.
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 Motion carries. Do we have a representative here this evening from Giving Hearts? We'll make sure this, that Mrs. Binstock gets this proclamation to them. We'll now move into Item B on Administration and Finance. In that, this evening, we have some city board appointments, and that will be handled by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. At the conclusion of, at the end of last year, there were several city boards and committees that had members that terms had expired. One of those is the Planning and Zoning Commission, which have a three-year term. Commissioner Frederick, Stark County Commissioner Franchek, and Joe Marie Katemis, all desire reappointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Underneath Civil Service, both Maureen White and Amanda Fitzsimmons desires reappointment. Under the Board of Adjustment, which is also a three-year term, Pat Brenn desires reappointment. And underneath the Southwest Water Authority, George Nodlin desires appointment. And for the Dickinson Municipal Airport Authority, which is a five-year term, Bruce Burke desires reappointment. City staff recommends approval of those members being reappointed to those boards.
Okay. Mrs. Winko, even though Commissioner Frederick is, is part of this appointment, he can, he can vote for this, right?
Mr. President, I think that's fine.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners, on these board appointments? If there are none, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is we have a Chapter Twenty-nine Amendment for inclement weather policy. Mr. Dossinger?
Thank you, Mr. President. In your packet, you will have the recommended changes made to Chapter Twenty-nine. Tonight, there are two recommended changes. The first one deals with weather and emergency closure policy for the city. Just kind of want to highlight a few areas of the, of the recommended changes. All employees shall make every effort to get to work each day of employment with the city. The city administrator or his, his or her designee will make the decision and announcement if there is no work or delay in work due to inclement weather or an emergency declared event. The beginning and end of the declared event will be specified by the city administrator. If this should happen, every effort will be made to put this announcement through official city communication channels. On an undeclared weather emergency event, any benefit-eligible employee who is unable to make it to work because of inclement weather or an emergency must use accrued vacation leave, personal leave, or a floating holiday. During a declared event, benefit-eligible employees will receive leave time up to eight hours for any scheduled work time that is missed due to the declared event. This will be designated as weather emergency closure leave. The intent of weather emergency closure leave is to make employees whole for the work time missed due to the declared event. If the declared event is a partial day, benefit-eligible employees will receive weather emergency closure leave up to eight hours for the portion of the scheduled shift missed due to the declared event. Benefit-eligible employees who report to work a scheduled shift then elect to go home on accrued leave before an inclement weather event or an emergency is declared will receive weather emergency closure leave only for the time that is authorized as to the declared event. Nonexempt benefit-eligible employees whose services are essential for the safety of the public as determined by management shall receive premium pay, one-half of the regular rate of pay, for time work during a declared event in addition to the regular rate of pay. This will be designated as weather emergency closure pay. The intent of a weather emergency closure pay is to recognize the essential personnel who are required to work during the declared event to maintain public safety and welfare. City staff is looking for approval of these amended changes.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Mr. Dossinger on this Chapter Twenty-nine Amendment? This is the first reading.
I believe it would be ordnance seventeen sixty-seven, Mayor.
What's that?
I believe it would be ordnance seventeen sixty-seven.
Seventeen sixty-seven. All right, thank you.
Mr. President, I do believe that the ordinance does include the second portion as well. So if City Administrator Dossinger wants to talk about the holiday pay, then it's all included in, in one ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you, Attorney Winko. The other portion of the amended changes to Chapter Twenty-nine deals with holidays for the City of Dickinson. Currently, the recognized holidays for the city includes the New Year's Day, Martin Luther King's Birthday, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans' Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. City staff is looking for approval of two additional days, which includes the Friday after Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Commissioners, any comments, thoughts?
I don't have any issue with adding those to our holiday list.
Okay. I think these are recognized holidays by pretty much every organization across the state right now, so.
They are recognized by the North Dakota League of Cities Organization.
Okay. Well, this is ordnance seventeen sixty-seven. We'll have the second reading in the public hearing next meeting, so this first reading. Commissioners, if you have no further comment, I'd look for a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion? Now it will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up this evening, we have wages and market study contract, and this will be handled by City Administrator Dossinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. City staff is looking for approval of a wage market study contract with Graves Consulting. The portion of the contract, the city will pay Graves Consulting LLC a fixed fee not to exceed twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars billed in four installments over life of the project based on mutual agreement to perform a comprehensive compensation study. Optional costs for onsite visits may be incurred at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars per onsite visit inclusive of all travel costs. This contract has been reviewed by legal. City staff is recommending approval of this contract.
Thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions, comments, Commissioners?
I, I have one. Have we, have we used this? Have, have we used them before?
We have.
We have?
Yeah. They did our last one, so.
Okay.
So how, how long are they thinking, Mrs. Carlson or Mr. Dossinger? What are they, what's the timeframe?
Yeah, we are hoping to get this contract approved, so we would have this information available when we start our budget cycle. So we're hoping to have this information available to us by the end of the first quarter at the latest.
All right, thank you. Any further comments or questions? Now I look for a motion on this wage market study contract.
Mr. President, move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up is a report by Mr. Dossinger, one on lot sales and another one on Southwest night.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, the City of Dickinson did list several parcels for sale within our city limits. We did not receive any bids on those parcels that were advertised for sale. We are planning on relisting advertising for sale of those parcels with the same recommended bid amounts next month.
All right, thank you, Mr. Dossinger. Any questions for Mr. Dossinger on his reports or on the report for the lot sales? All right, on two thousand and twenty-three Southwest night with the legislators is February twenty-third, I mean, February thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-three. So, Mr. Dossinger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As you had stated, the two thousand and twenty-three Southwest night of the legislators is scheduled for February thirteenth, beginning at five PM to eight PM Central Time. It will be held at the Bismarck Hotel and Convention Center this year. We do have five city staff members that will be attending, and the City of Dickinson will also have a display booth. If there's any Commissioners that would like to attend, please make sure that you let Mrs. Binstock know of that, please.
Thank you. Any questions on Southwest night at, with the legislators?
No, I'm good.
This is very well attended and is probably one of the premier nights down there for legislators. They, across the state, they love to come out for this, and they are going to be honoring and roasting Senator Wardner that night, so should be interesting. Okay, we'll move on to Mrs. Carlson. You have consideration to approve an investment of funds.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Upon a meeting held Wednesday, January fourth, with the Finance Committee, it was decided to negotiate terms, interest rate, and minimum balance requirement for an amount of four million dollars of the city's undesignated cash balance with our current depository bank. And with that, the certificate of deposits, or CDs, shall be designed to attain a prudent rate of return in consideration of the city's legal constraints and the cash flow needed for the organization. And with that, the City of Dickinson investment in CDs will remain sufficiently liquid to enable the city to meet all operating requirements which, which might be reasonably anticipated. Therefore, there will be an agreement from the depository bank that there will not be any penalties upon, or if needed, a withdrawal from the certificate before the maturity date. Upon negotiations, looking at that, we looked at a term of six months at one million, eleven months at one million, and eighteen months at two million at the rates for twenty-six, for fifty-six, and for seventy-six. And the reason being for the tier part of the, of the negotiation was due to the fact that one IRS is, requires, one, that any interest that is earned at the, by the end of the year is paid out. They can't bank it for the next year. So with that, we could look at negotiating the six months in case of any projects that may be coming forward in the middle of the year, that we could possibly use this if we had to with the full interest on there. And then going eleven months, instead of going one more month in January of the next year, we'd end this one at the eleven months in December and then be paid out on that one. And again, then you can decide to renew. The signature cards for the CDs is going to be consistent with our other accounts where we have four signatures, but any renewals will not need a signature. It just needs to be renewed, but the interest would be paid out and only the principal would be going forward. Then with the other one for the two million, that can either be quarterly or annually for the interest to be paid out. And the interest of these CDs would go into our interest revenue fund, which then goes for equipment or capital assets or, or whatever the commission desires for this to be paid out like we did for the twenty-three budget. Upon that, staff is recommending the following to go with the tiers, and I'll stand here for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this agreement with Brevera to invest our discretionary, I guess, cash, right? So. This will allow us to earn at least a little interest on some, some of this money that, until we need it, so. There are no questions or comments? I'd look for a motion.
I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bear. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we will go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have some appointments to the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission. This will be handled by Museum Center Director Furman. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. President, Commissioners, I'm pleased to appear before you today to ask you to consider giving your final approval to the nomination of Dr. William Hansard to the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission. As you will recall, one of the responsibilities of a certified local government is that we maintain a qualified historic preservation commission, whose members preferably possess professional qualifications in history, architectural history, archaeology, anthropology, curation, planning, landscape, architecture, or related fields, or who have a personal interest in historic preservation. In addition to an interest and willingness to serve, the education, experience, and background of this candidate as a historian qualifies him, and he has been preliminary, preliminarily approved by the North Dakota State Historic Preservation Office for service on our commission as required by statute. A complete curriculum vitae for Dr. Hansard is on file with Historic Preservation Commission, but the briefest introduction would be to describe him thusly. Dr. William Hansard is a professional historian with a PhD from the University of Texas at Arlington with certificates in public history and archival administration. He assumed the post of Digital Collection Specialist for Social Media and Education at the Theodore Roosevelt Center at Dickinson State University in April of two thousand and twenty-two. At this time, the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission asks that Dr. Hansard be approved for membership on the commission to begin his initial three-year term at the commission's next meeting.
Thank you, Director Furman. I think he is more than qualified.
I believe so.
So it's great to have somebody, an asset like that in our community, so. Twofold at the college and for us too, so.
Absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to read his dissertation. Working for Peanuts?
Yeah.
Oh, on, on circuses, yes.
On circuses, yeah. Has a huge interest in circuses.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Well, next time I'll come in my clown suit.
I was like going to join in you.
You volunteering to work for Peanuts?
As long as there's an awful lot of them.
All righty. If there are no further comments, I'd look for a motion to consider this appointment.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none will vote. Dr. Bear?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next item up, we have a proposed lactation pod project for the Dickinson Museum Center, and this will be handled by Stark County Historical Society Member Destiny Wolf.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. I'm here on behalf of the Stark County Historical Society, along with the Southwest North Dakota Museum Foundation Boards. I sit as treasurer on Stark County Historical Society. So we would like to add a lactation pod to provide a secure, private environment for lactating mothers to be able to nurse or feed their babies when visiting the museum center. I'd like to read the letter that was included in all of your packets so that it stands on record. To the Dickinson, North Dakota City Commissioners, this is a letter of support for the Momma Va Lactation Pod Project on behalf of both the Southwest North Dakota Museum Foundation and Stark County Historical Society Boards. In addition, we are asking the City Commission to consider requesting American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount of up to twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars to support this project, given the successful track record of lactation support services and facilities receiving ARPA support. The Dickinson Museum Center Advisory Board strive to support an inclusive, family-friendly destination for visitors from all over the world. To be able to serve our museum visitors with the best experience possible, we believe the addition of a Momma Va Lactation Pod space is a worthy investment. We continue to see museum center growth from increasing museum visitor numbers to evolving and dynamic gallery experiences. With the museum expansion project soon on the horizon and the ability to plan for the lactation pod to move into the new space as well, we feel this is a strong investment in our long-term vision of the Dickinson Museum Center experience. We look forward to receiving your support for this community improvement project. I'd just like to add as well that our new hospital president, Carol Enderly, has recently come down. I gave her a one-on-one tour of the museum, and CHI Dickinson is interested in sponsoring five thousand dollars towards this project as well. That would give us some custom logo and design services for graphics on this pod, and, and it really is a need in, in our museum center since we do have so many young families visiting. I'd be happy to stand for any questions or comments.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
I, I, Mr. President, I've looked and researched into this. I think this would be a very good addition to, to our museum. I think this would even help bring people into our community because of having the Momma Va Pod. They have a, an app on, that you can download on the cell phone, so mothers who are breastfeeding are able to look for the nearest pod unit. It would direct them right to our museum. That would bring more business to the museum. And I just, I think for our community, this, this is a win-win situation for us. I know the Bismarck Airport has one, and I believe the college has one. I just think this would be a nice addition.
You are correct. The college is the only one that's in town.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Bear, for doing that research on that. And I'm glad that we're.
I believe there's one at the Dickinson Airport, too.
Is there?
Sorry.
Okay.
Actually, I believe there's one at the Dickinson Airport also.
No, there isn't.
There isn't? Not yet? Okay.
Potentially coming.
I thought I saw one out there when I was there.
Okay. Well, I'll have to give Mr. Brown a call, see if they have that service out there, so. But no, and I'm glad you're planning that into the museum expansion also, so. If there are no further questions or comments, I would look for a motion on this.
Mr. President, I move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Bear.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or questions?
President Decker? May I ask, are you moving the motion to approve the full amount? I just want it for the record.
Let's see what we got here. The... So the full amount is for twenty?
Twenty-four thousand one hundred dollars.
Twenty-four thousand one hundred, okay. I, I have on two different, on here, I have twenty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred. So it would be minus the five thousand, you're saying, with the, for the twenty-four thousand?
Correct, yes.
So this motion would be for the twenty-four thousand one hundred?
Yes, it would be for the bit larger one. That particular unit is wheelchair accessible.
Okay.
And discussing this with, with everybody, I, I just feel that this would be the better choice for, like, if a mother had a stroller, that she could take her children in there, would give her more room. But, yes, it would be for the full amount.
Okay. So that'd be for twenty-four thousand one hundred, Mrs. Carlson, of ARPA funding. Okay. So, that'd be for $24,100, Mrs. Carlson, of ARPA funding, so. Commissioner Frederick, you're still good with your second?
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Any further questions from staff or individuals? Not? We'll go ahead and vote. Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next item up this evening is the public hearing and comments, public comments, that are not on the agenda. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to come forward and bring any items up that are not on the agenda this evening, please do so, or if you have questions on any item on the agenda, you may also come forward and ask a question about that. This is your time. Also, if you're watching online or listening in, 701-456-7006, you may call in. Anyone from the public? Anyone have any questions on items not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one has any questions on items not on the agenda or items contained within the agenda, I'll close the public hearing. We'll move back to the normal agenda. And the next item up is our Microsoft contract renewal, and this is our consideration to approve. This will be presented by IT Director Meyer. Welcome.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. So, the contract that I have before you tonight is our three-year Microsoft renewal contract. It is used to cover all the operating system, Microsoft Office, as well as the user licenses to be able to use all of the software within the city of Dickinson. It is a three-year contract. As I said, it totals around $177,000. Over the course of that three years, it is within budget and has been reviewed by legal.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Meyer? Now, I look for a motion on this contract renewal for Microsoft.
Mr. President, move to approve.
A motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Baer. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Dr. Baer?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, move into public safety, and item up this month, we have Fire Department with their monthly report. This will be handled by Fire Chief Presnell. Welcome.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners, before you tonight to present the monthly report for the Fire Department. So, again, a reminder of our services, we do a little more than just fire suppression. We're doing EMS, we're a part of regional hazmat team. We provide public education, fire prevention, and other different regional response capabilities, such as rope rescue, confined space. It was a busy month for us. We responded to 238 calls for service. That puts us at 1,517 calls year-to-date, which is a 92% increase. The reason for the big increase is because we did increase our EMS responses for the last six months of the year. So, that's what accounts for that large increase in our call volume. So, December was a very busy month. It wasn't just because of the EMS calls, but we did run a lot more calls. It was over 238 calls for the month of December. Here's a breakdown of the call types. EMS calls were the highest calls that we ran to. Second to that was false alarms, false calls, and that was in part due to the cold snap we had, caused a lot of sprinkler breaks in a lot of the apartment complexes. So, I believe we ran to 28 separate sprinkler breaks around the community. And then, good intent calls because of the weather, a lot of motorist assists and stuff that we ran to that added to that increased call volume. I will point out, about 10% of that EMS is also vehicle accidents. The way that our system classifies vehicle accidents are also considered an EMS call, so. But that does only account for 10% of that total number. Calls by station, as always, Station One or the south station sees the largest number of calls. Our busiest area town is south of the freeway. Here's a heat map of where we saw a lot of our calls. Again, you can see a lot of that's south of the freeway. Our response times, they increased a little bit due to the weather. We did have to slow down with having snow for most of the month of December. Roads were a little icy here. A lot of these blizzard conditions, we were forced to slow down quite a bit. So, we did see an increase in our response times, slowed us down just a little bit. Training hours, we completed 200. Again, that's a lot lower than what we normally see each month, and that was doing part to a lot of the weather issues that we had. But that did put us at 6,493 training hours for the year, which we got about 96% of our overall training requirement for ISO. And as you can see, we trained on EMS, hazmat, firefighter one, extrication, firefighter two, and confined space, and then a lot of maintenance, specifically dealing with cold weather maintenance on our vehicles. Fire prevention, 78 routine inspections. We had 82 other fire prevention activities and issued one certificate of occupancy. Some community activities, we spent a lot of time with Santa Claus for the month of December. He rode in the fire truck quite a few times, but it was a lot of fun. And then, one thing I'll add before we move on, we are exploring different options with our EMS response because it is starting to put a big tax on the Fire Department. So, we are exploring different options on how we can make, how we can respond a little more efficiently and not be responding to some of these calls that maybe we don't need to be at. So, with that, I'll stand for, any questions you have?
Any questions, Commissioners?
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. If somebody really wants to see what these firefighters have to go through, Captain Rhodey posted a great video about the weight that all their gear is. He posted it on Facebook. It's a great video about what they carry into a fire and what they have to do to be prepared for this. I mean, and that goes for any of our public safety individuals. I mean, the wear and tear that goes on to their bodies, be it fire, police, you know, the 911 call people that sit there and they're, you know, have to, the mental stress of that position, down to our Public Works people that are out there in unbelievable conditions. You know, trying to keep the roads open and just keeping our city a great city. I mean, I don't think we can say enough how much we appreciate it, so.
I do appreciate that, President Decker, and that is one comment I can make. I don't know that you'll find a community with a better fire, police, and dispatch group than what Dickinson has. They're truly dedicated, committed to our community, and they are the utmost professionals and take these jobs very serious, and that's across the board. So, thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that, and like you said, and I said before, and that goes across for just all city staff. I think everyone takes pride in what we do here, and we're... And I was making a comment earlier to City Administrator Dossinger about we get, sometimes we get beat up a little bit online, and we don't necessarily respond because that's kind of a losing battle to some of those comments. But what we do every day is in the best interest of the citizen. So, I'd like to thank everybody again, so.
Thank you.
Alright. Any other questions or comments? Not? Thank you, Chief Presnell.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have our monthly report from engineering. This will be handled by Engineering and Community Development Director Skluzicek.
Alright. Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. So, we concluded the year well, and a lot of good improvements to the team, and kudos to them for the hard work and dedication and all the effort as we worked towards the end of the year. So, for building and code, we saw, when you look at the combined total between county and city-related permit numbers, and so those are permits that were actually paid for and then ultimately picked up. We concluded the year very similar or just above 2021. Total fees collected, and again, those were paid and then picked up. So, we ended up higher than 2021. And again, we're kind of correlating that to a few permits that were larger than, or more substantial, commercial-related permits, but then also this could have associated aspects to inflation. For planning and zoning, so I've talked a little bit about a multidisciplinary development process, or what we refer to as the pre-application process. Actually, the first project that we held or had a pre-application process for is actually a rezone and a subdivision. It's a major subdivision, and that will actually be before the January P&amp;Z meeting. And originally, that consultant providing services to the developer, they said that it would probably be May or June of this year before all of this would be approved and moved forward. And right now, we're currently on schedule for the early March agenda, and I'm proud to say that we actually have no conditions on our staff report. So, everything's been resolved and everything's moving forward. The planner positions, we've had that posted for some time. We do have two interviews scheduled for tomorrow afternoon, and we've already started talking. If, in fact, we feel confident and comfortable with making an offer, what are those next steps? And how do we do that quickly and aggressively so that we don't take any unnecessary time? Engineering, so I've talked a little bit in the past about the CIP editor program, and as always, I must say thank you to Aaron Meyer for preparing that. We take no credit at all from a computer programming standpoint on that. But right now, we have seven total projects that are fully updated. And when I say that, I mean, the budgets are in place, notes related to, you know, key project details, such as when contracts were approved by commission, or when certain deadlines or other criteria are in place, including revenue as well. So, we've had Linda's team entering revenue data and all other necessary pertinent data that's available to us. So, pretty happy with the progress there, and we're going to continue to build out those projects in that software. The community rating system, that's something through the National Flood Insurance Program, through FEMA, and this is an annual renewal, and the benefit to that is those that are associated or receiving benefits from the National Flood Insurance Program, they actually get a discount by us having this community rating system in place. And so, that's something that we worked through, and Loretta was able to complete. Related to the FEMA or floodplain mapping, so then the Stark County Flood Insurance Rate Map and rate study determination, that was all published back in December. That had been kind of an ongoing process for some time, and Loretta was spearheading that process. There were even some steps to do some appeals for some of the mapping and some of the, some of the aspects of the study that were completed. Unfortunately, those appeals were denied, and at this point, we look to move forward with the mapping and everything as it was proposed by FEMA, and ultimately, then that would keep us or maintain our status through the National Flood Insurance Program. So, if there's any other questions on that, we can certainly discuss. With our geographical information system, our GIS team, a team of one, Mr. Darryl Holcutter, so just some kind of exciting and useful tools that can be utilized by other staff members. So, there's something that was prepared for the Public Works team with, when they clean out sanitary sewer lines, and you can actually show and see kind of the progress that's being made with respect to time. So, it's a useful function for them. And then, ultimately, we did have a situation back in December where some updates were completed for the software, and we lost some functionality for a short period of time with the software. So, in collaboration with Mr. Holcutter, and then also with the IT department, we've had some discussions about, you know, unfortunately, right now, GIS has been the only software package that has not been under the direct purview of the IT department from a update standpoint and those kind of things. And so, we're going to work on better collaboration or improved collaboration with the IT department to follow their protocols and procedures that they have for all of the other software programs that the city has. With that being said, any questions?
Thank you. Any Commissioners, any questions on the monthly report? I think it looks promising. I think 2023 is going to be interesting. There's a lot of things swirling around in the air, so it'll be an interesting year. So, I think we'll be right on track real quick.
I would just have a quick comment. It's really nice to get the regular updates from your department. I think it really helps us know and be able to educate the public on what's going on, so. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, sir.
And the improved graphics, too.
Yes.
It's work in progress.
Work in progress. Alright, we'll move right into Public Works, and we have a monthly report from Public Works Directors Roff. Welcome.
Welcome. Good evening. One thing I know we're standardizing is our background, so my background is multiple colors this month, but I think we'll get that standardized quickly. Monthly report, now this is November's report. I did notice on Fire, his first slide, November, I know, I don't want to show mistakes, but this is not a mistake. This is November's because December's is, will be in the next meeting. We were a little busy in December and didn't get it finalized. So, this is the November report. We'll go through real quick. Again, our services. Now, I want to give a kudos to Fire and Police because I'm following their, you know, the way they look. So, it just shows our services in Public Works. One capital project that I keep bringing up because I think it's interesting for the public, and I get a lot of questions about it, is the mausoleum addition. Progress report for November, the concrete ceiling lid is poured over both niches. CMU bond beam was installed on both roofs. Metal roof panels will be installed on existing roof. They were up there today, continuing on the roof. And one of the things with that, if the weather is above 30 for four or five days, we might get cold springs to come back and to do the rest of the granite. But it has to be above 30, almost 40 degrees for a substantial amount of time. So, well, depending on the weather, that might get finished more during this, during the wintertime. Another picture of the crypts. Special events in November, the Trick or Trunk, which I know other departments have brought this up. This was a great event. I know Recycling Coordinator Rachel Schumacher gave the presentation, but handing out the treats were Aaron McMahon and Napoleon Dynamite Marlies Ram. I think we spelt that right, Ramboosik.
Ramboosik, yeah.
Yeah. Op Works, November Op Works, there are 114 service requests in November. Cannon Replacement, Street Repair were the biggest service requests. If you have any questions, just ask me and answer them. Fleet work orders in November, solid waste recycling was the most. That, usually that and PD are the most. It looks like Buildings and Grounds had quite a few. We were doing a lot of street activity at that time, too, prepping for the snow event. 78 work orders in November. Gallons, 11,819 total gallons for the city in November. 5,562 were the clear diesel, and then 3879, looks like was the unleaded, and from there on. A lot of gallons goes through that. Uh, and, and from there on, a lot of gallons goes through that every month. Street Department, we're prepping, of course, for our winter storms, pre-treating certain areas of town and prepping for, uh, the events that, uh, will show after this PowerPoint. Uh, Forestry, um, he's been working, uh, a lot with Parks and Rec on, uh, plan of action for the diseased elm, Dutch elm diseased trees, uh, DED, uh, he's reorganizing hermit forestry. I know Blake's been doing a lot of good projects and hopefully this, this will be his first spring, uh, going. And I think it'll be a great summer and year for the, for our new forestry. Overall tonnages, um, you see November's and, uh, year-to-date, uh, November was a little down more from last year. Uh, I, uh, we talked about this, I think a lot of it's weather-related, um, compared to last year, construction activities, things like that. Construction demo, you can see the household is a good, uh, percent of the pie and then construction and all of the materials. We did start moving all our, uh, uncrushed asphalt and concrete from a Baylor building out to the landfill. That's helped tremendously at our Baylor area and, uh, we're looking at our expansion. Um, it gives us more room. Uh, before, if we didn't get it crushed right away, we'd be having difficulties with room. So this, this will give us a little more leeway and ability to, um, we still probably do it annually, but it does give us, uh, the, the room that if we want to wait a year or get a better price or a different time, uh, we can, we, we have some time. Uh, recycling tonnages, uh, you can see when it first started, it was pretty high and it's continually kind of been dropping since then. Um, had the discussion with the recycle coordinator, uh, kind of noticed this, we're going to try to get, uh, moving again and trying to get more, uh, information out there to get people excited, uh, excited about recycling. Um, I just saw a message, we're going to start, try to have a meeting with our new marketing coordinator, try to get this, get it back again, get the spirit back about recycling in our, in our community. Um, so they've been working on that. Water utilities, utility, uh, billing work orders, these come from, the ones from City Hall on our Great Plains System. Uh, so you had 48 utility, utility billing work orders. Uh, looks like most of them were delinquents, water, water off and delinquent water on. Utility billing work orders, uh, there was 48 that I just showed you in the pie in November. Uh, for 2022, there's 730 compared to 538 last year. Uh, Southwest Water purchased, um, you can see that we are down from what we purchased last year. And you'll see this in, in the December totals too. Um, uh, through November, we purchased 881 million gallons. Last year at the time, we were 946. A lot of that was from the, the year we did start picking up, um, uh, more purchased water at, through the end of the year, but it was a wetter spring. Um, so I, I think we'll come out okay at the end with consumption. Um, but it's been kind of slow this year, so hopefully our revenue is, um, within what we had budgeted. I think it should be close. Water vendor gallons, um, by, by the month and by the year, um, in, we're a little less in 2022. Uh, that does get quite a bit of activity. We've already gone through, uh, sold 945,000 gallons through November at that, uh, uh, fill station. Septic Hall is the same, just kind of goes up and down. That's a new, our new, our new septic station. I don't know if I'll include this every, every slide, but maybe we'll do an annual report on it. Uh, it's, it's, since its inception, it's been very well received. Um, and there is quite a bit of gallons that go in there each month. Affluent, uh, in November, uh, you can see the nine million gallons is what we sold to the refinery. And, uh, hopefully in the years to come, or next year, we'll have a little bit more because we have that agreement with Southart Golf Course. And then hopefully with the additional, uh, sales, that, uh, gray area will get bigger, uh, next year. And then meter replacements, we continue on our meter replacement program. We're working on the larger meters, the commercial meters. Uh, one of the things that kind of have slowed us down is the ability, uh, to get some of these meters are a little slower. Uh, and I'm trying to put a focus on getting more of these done. We're doing all these ourselves, so it's coordinated with the commercial or the, uh, whatever we need to do and go in and, and replace that meter. Um, and, uh, I'm hoping 2023 will, will be finished. And then all the meters except some of the later newer, the newer ones in, in State Avenue will, will have the new MIUs and the fix, be on the fixed base system. Public Works current openings, I do want to thank again HR for all the work they're, uh, doing. I think I take, talk to HR more than any other staff recently. Um, these are all, I should say, current vac, and vacant positions. Uh, uh, we have, uh, had some interviews, I think yesterday or this morning, we'll have some more tomorrow. Hopefully we can start filling, uh, some of these positions. Right now there's 20 on the board, um, and, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll get some of those filled soon. And then our Public Works app, please sign up if you're not signed up and that's it for November. Any questions?
Thank you, Mrs. Eroff. Any questions, Commissioners, for Mrs. Eroff on his November report? Hearing none, we'll move into the snowstorm report.
Okay, thank you, uh, Commissioners. Uh, we'll do our, what we put together for, for the snow events. Um, again, I want to thank all those contributed to the team during these events, uh, not done it without you, including public safety, all city staff, uh, everything we had, uh, it's always people that step up, um, during these events. And, um, I remember and it does not go unnoticed, so, um, appreciate all those that helped. Um, first we'll talk a little bit about November. Uh, it was a, you know, not as big a storm as the, the latest one. Um, these are just overtime call-out hours, uh, for November. Uh, through those three days, we had 475 hours. Uh, contractors used, Two's Win, Roxol, and Terry's Water Works. Uh, the first three, of course, Terry's is under, he does our, uh, parking lots. Two's Win and Roxol, we've used the last, uh, three storms. Total of 151.75 hours. Uh, materials, uh, see the salt brine and cutting edges totals. And then, uh, just leave it on this one for a little bit. We had overtime 16,000, over 16,000 overtime. I did not get the regular coated snowstorm hours on this. This is just overtime hours. Um, in December's, I did include the regular hours also that were coded to snow and ice. Um, but so you got our overtime contractors, cutting edges, brine, salt and fuel. A total, uh, for that storm was close to $70,000. Like I said, that doesn't include our regular hours. This is just over and above our regular hours. Any questions on that? Okay. Um, December, you can see how the, the different hours from the 14th through the, basically the 23rd. Um, these are our call-outs, um, and overtimes, uh, and, and this, this slide here is additional to the normal 10-hour workdays. This is over and above our 10-hour workdays. Uh, contractors used the same, you see substantial more, um, amount of hours. Um, and I, and I do want to thank the contractors again too. I, I don't know if I did in the last time I presented it, but I, uh, uh, all, all the contractors were really good to work with, especially this last storm. Um, had some great, uh, help with them too and, uh, everybody was wanting to get the job done, so appreciate that. Materials, uh, let's see, I got something here that we noticed right before, before we sent it. Um, materials in December, uh, we had 100 more tons of salt. Uh, we used a couple different trucks, a couple older trucks that didn't have our ABL on our usage. So, uh, if you want to add 100 tons on that, so the total actually for salt is 15,652. So we got 143 tons of salt and brine, um, uh, for the materials used. So there's our, our, uh, overtime, our snow ice control hours that were quoted to that. Contractors, cutting edge, brine, salt and fuel. And then if you add that additional 100 tons, the total is actually 133,72659. So that's what, uh, that amount of storm was. I think we did pretty good for the amount of snow we had. Um, everybody was busy. I didn't see any contractors doing something they shouldn't be doing. Um, they all, uh, which were good this year too. I don't know if I told you, we did get, uh, I got some plug-in AVLs for all the contractors. So during the storm events, I can see, I have it as Contractor One, Contractor Two, Contractor Three. So I can see where they're at at all times along with, with our staff. So that really helped to have that out there. The only thing is some of the, uh, uh, Two's had two crews and I had two AVLs, but sometimes had two or three pieces of equipment and I only could see one. So I might get, uh, a couple more AVLs for these events. They're not too expensive, just so I can see them in a snowstorm. It makes a big difference to see where everybody's at out there. Um, and one thing we used too during the storm, um, whoever were calling in, uh, had some help. We had that up and it was really good for them to know too, if somebody called in, well, they're a couple blocks away from you or they're working and we know that, knew the direction of the work, we could tell them exactly where they're at. And, and I think it, uh, I think it helped the, the people that were calling in asking where is somebody? Because they look out the window, they don't see anybody. So, um, you know, again, we had a pretty good game plan and, and every storm is different. Every plan is a little, a little different, but, uh, I think we can only improve each time we, we have a, an event like this. So any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, Mr. President, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Zeroff, the only comment I would have and that I've heard from, uh, citizens of the community is that, um, they felt like the spring blizzard that we had. Um, maybe the city did a, a better job of, uh, communicating out, um, when the plows would be in certain areas and things like that. Um, and, you know, I guess I didn't really notice that until I, uh, after the fact, after I heard this, I went to our, our, like, our Facebook pages and things like that. And, um, we did have like maps in the spring and stuff like that, like, hey, the, I think it was like red, yellow and green. These are the routes that we're going to be working on, um, and then we're going to work to the yellow. Um, that's something I think that the, the community really appreciated. Um, maybe we could work on that, just being kind of like standard operating procedure in the future is like, once we get through that, that, um, like that emergency
Right.
phase of like just communicating, hey, this is when you can expect your area to, um, to be plowed. And I know that's not foolproof because like if the weather
Right, changes.
Yeah, yeah, uh, but, um, I, I think, um, that was something, that was feedback that I received is that they felt like they were more aware of what was going on with the snow clearing, um, in the spring as opposed to like in the November and December storms.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
I'm not sure what we did a little different. I know it seemed like we put out more, we, I had a, had a lot of help
Yeah, you did, but
from, I, I didn't put it out, uh, uh,
Commissioner Otman, I think that
Dustin and Aaron did a lot of that.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Otman, for that comment. So one thing we really had at balance is sometimes when you push so much out,
Yep.
you desensitize the, the importance of these messages.
Yep.
And, uh, we had a lot of conversations. That's certain, certainly something that we will take into consideration for the next storm.
That's something we're definitely working on and trying to refine.
Yeah. Well, and especially now that we have somebody that's tasked with that work. I mean, I think that's, that's something that we can, I mean, it's, I, I'm not saying that you guys did anything wrong. I'm just saying that that's something that we can maybe be cognizant of.
No, anything, any comment is well, well-received.
And, and the only thing that I, I would say is, and this is your department and any department that are ringing you up overtime, uh, due to, to weather-related, um, issues that finance is keeping a, a running total of all this. So when I do have conversations down in Bismarck, I can, uh, keep them abreast to what we're putting out in additional funds. So, and just shoot me a email whenever you guys get a total, so I can just use that data.
Okay, I think this is pretty close, but
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. Add that extra salt in and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
And then make sure, you know, that's everything with contractors, make sure that we're up on all those. And I, I've heard nothing but, you know, good. You know, we, uh, had to deal with some adversity and, you know, we had snow come from every direction these storms. So, um, it has been interesting.
I know we're, we're still dealing with the issues, we're still trying to clean up and get areas and, um, you know, we'll just keep plugging away till, till spring.
I, I was really impressed with how city staff, it looked like they were actively looking for areas that needed to be clea- cleared. And, um, I, I mean, your staff did do an excellent job, so.
Well, thank you. I want to again thank the contractors and everybody in the city that helped, helped us, so appreciate that.
Uh, Mr. Zeroff, I, I have, I actually have two questions.
Uh-oh.
I'm sorry. Has there been a update of, of the possible ETA for the new, uh, snow blower?
I think it's supposed to be here either tomorrow, it's supposed to be here this week.
Okay.
So we, uh, we do have that new Larue snow blower. Um, it should be here this week. We are working on one of the older ones now in the shop, so I'll feel more comfortable when it's here. It should be here anytime.
So then we'll have two, two of those?
We'll have two newer ones and it, we'll have three, uh, two newer ones and then, uh, yeah.
Old faithful.
Yeah, old faithful and
The old truck.
Yeah, the old truck. Uh, there's a really old snow one that's really in bad shape, but we'll have, um, we'll have three good, good snow plows, yeah.
Okay. My second question is, um,
Snow blowers, sorry.
Who's, who is responsible for the sidewalks? The, the walking path, the sidewalks and that around town? One of the things I've noticed as I drive around, especially when school's letting out, are the kids are walking out on the streets because the sidewalks are not cleared. And even around the rec center, I see kids at night dr- riding their bikes out on the road because there are no cleared sidewalks for them and kind of concerned about their safety. And I, I know along 15, that's a walking path. And I know at one place, a gentleman's driveway, that's probably a, probably a 10-foot, uh, snow hill that goes right across that path. So who's responsible for clearing those paths so that we can get?
Well, there's, there's a lot of different ones, you know, if, if it's a regular sidewalk, it says adjacent property owner. If there's, uh, rec department trails and city trails. Um, so it's kind of specific, uh, you know, some of the newer trails along 10th Avenue East, 15th, the, the, the trail, uh, on the west end with, by the hospital with the lights, those are all our responsibility.
Okay.
But if you see some, I noticed even on 10th Avenue East, they did go and blow them all. But with the melting, there's ice, it's, you know, it's really tough. Um, but they do, they have been, oh, and, and, and the East Business Loop too, that's our trail. They have, they did go out and blow them all with the blower, but I know they need work because there's ice and everything else. It's just really difficult to keep up right now with that.
Right.
But if you see something specific, give, give us a call and we'll try to take a look at it.
Okay, because I, I just, I, I mean, you see these elementary kids walking out in the streets, trying to just walk home after school and you got cars and
Well, on 21st, that's ours too, from middle school. So if there's, um, I'll mention that to our Buildings and Grounds people. And I, I know they did blow them all, but it's probably iced in and some other things now.
Okay, thank you.
No, appreciate that.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for Mrs. Eroff? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move into item number eight and that is Commissioners' time. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to bring up that weren't on the agenda or just public announcements for the evening? Hearing no comments from the Commission, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
Submoved.
Second.
We adjourn.
Sec.